PM Sharp. If I could have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not very good, it's making too loud back there. We'll call if you could please, Mr. Furman.
All right, Mr. Revich.
Here. Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Mr. McBride. The self. Mr. Rosetti.
Here.
And Mr. Rock.
Present.
Hey gentlemen, if I could have you review in front of you or in your possession, the meeting minutes from June 13th, 2022. Advise of any questions, comments, corrections? Questions, comments, corrections needed? Names are all spelled properly? You only want here.
I have lines at two ends, but that don't.
Two ends?
Yeah, perhaps at two ends, it's always done like that. They always go one.
That will be corrected, sir.
Thank you. Bit got it?
All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 13th, 22, 2022, with the correction of Mr. Huffman's last name, which I will resolve.
Thank you, I will make that motion.
Second. We'll call Mr. Furman. Mr. Revich.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Huffman.
Aye.
Self abstained. Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Pass for one abstention. I will entertain a motion to table for the last time, the minutes from July 25th and August 8th. Those will be before you in our next meeting.
That, so moved, second.
Mr. Revich.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Huffman.
Aye.
Self. Aye. Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen.
Okay.
Uh, I will entertain motion to open a public hearing regarding a text amendment to automobile slash truck stops as a permitted use in the HC Highway Commercial Zoning District and to add a definition of automobile slash truck stops to the zoning regulations.
I will make that motion though in the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Furman, second. I'm starting off. Ready to go home? Yeah, all right. Mr. Revich.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Huffman.
Aye.
Self.
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Mr. Ray, I am, may I assume correctly that we do not have any members of the public present to comment on this public hearing?
We do not, uh, if I could, I'll just note that notice of this public hearing was posted in the Daily Herald as appropriate on the 15 to 30 day required window. Um, no other public notices were required. And I'd be happy to speak on this at this point if you'd like, or if you want me to wait until the motion. Whatever you prefer.
Sure, all right.
Yeah.
So this, uh, petition for text amendment was signed by the zoning administrator, also the village manager Jay Hedges, to move automobile slash truck stops as a special use to a permitted use. And the discussion at a prior meeting that I had explained was that, um, none of the current truck stops that are up there got special use approval when they were put in, or they were annexed to the village after having already been there. So in effect, the villagers are already allowing these things without any kind of approval and everybody seems fine with it. So this just cleans up the code and makes it all kosher. Um, furthermore, it will make the process a little bit easier for any future truck stops that want to come in, such as Thornton's, which, uh, has a property for development that they will be moving on anytime. And then the second portion of this amendment is to add a definition. So I presented at a prior meeting, I believe it was the village of Huntley's definition. Uh, so I used the bones of that to create the definition that is included on the petition and the packet. Uh, it includes, you know, the basics of what a truck stop tends to be, which is diesel and gasoline fuel. Um, retail of, you know, convenience store items, also service and repair. Uh, potentially restaurants and other food services. Uh, truck washes, video gaming terminals, things like that. And it does not necessarily limit those amenities. So if something in the future becomes commonplace among truck stops, uh, the village could consider just simply interpreting it to include that amenity. Any questions for me?
That seems fair enough, we already have a zoning color dedicated to highway slash commercial.
Yeah. Yeah, this does not change that district at all, other than the specific use from, uh, special use approval to permitted use.
Mr. Rosetti, Mr. Neal, Rosetti, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I'm very good, thank you. Nope, I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing regarding text amendment for adding automobile automobile slash truck stops as a permitted use. Uh, basically bolting it permanently as an allowed use in the existing zoning code.
Who makes that motion?
A second. What, are you surprised?
Mr. Revich.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Huffman.
Aye.
Self. Aye. Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
I will now entertain a motion to recommend approval officially of a text amendment adding automobile slash truck stops as a permitted use in the HC Highway Commercial Zoning District and adding a definition of automobile slash truck stops to the zoning regulations.
I'm only allowed four, so yeah, so moved. Second. Okay, go.
Give it to him. Karen?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Revich.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Huffman.
Aye.
Self. Aye. Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did a good job, good job.
Go to village board terms meeting.
Good job.
No, need to do these individually?
Do we actually get to vote on the public hearing?
Really don't know, I was just thinking about that. I know, I know back in the day of Jeff Magnus, you should just declare them at the village board level. So I'll ask, I'll ask attorney, sure.
I think Mike Reed does the same.
Yeah, I'll ask Mark next time. I don't think it'd be a problem if you rather just declare them, as long as you open and close them in the same manner. Up to you.
What are the trustees, they just open it up, you know?
Are we looking, are we quoting each individual order, A, B, C, D? Or do we combine?
Uh, well, the public hearing, I think I'm actually at this point, we've already gone through protocol on first one. And, uh, for item number C, probably gonna breach protocol and say, I declare this public hearing open for item T. I will ask Mr. Josh Ray to provide us information as to the notice of the public hearing and whether or not there is members of the public here to speak.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can advise that notice of this public hearing was, uh, published in the Daily Herald as noted in your packet. Um, no other public notices were required, there are no members of the public here to speak that I can see. Uh, so then I guess I will just note that this was also discussed at a prior planning zoning commission meeting. Um, there have been at least two variances related to wall signage at truck stops. Um, as you all know, the signage in the truck stop area is generally treated differently than in other parts of the village. Seeing as how it's, you know, larger commercial areas, it's along interstate. Uh, so the planning zoning commission has recommended and the village board has approved increased size and number of wall signs in the past. And when that happens, you all tend to ask staff to just change it so that those rules don't have to keep coming for you. So this amendment changes the code to allow a truck stop instead of having one sign per street front exposure, to have one sign per retail office or other user in a building, uh, per street front exposure plus one additional sign per street front exposure. It also increases or rather links the total area of wall signage to 10% of the size of that building face. That is, uh, I use that number based on the approval that was done for Road Ranger recently. I think theirs was about 9.2% of their building face, so 10% should cover it. And then it keeps the same amount, you know, one sign cannot take up 10% of the building face, you know, each side is limited to a certain size as well, so you don't just have one massive sign on the side of the building. Um, so for your consideration, this amendment.
If I may ask, how much work did you or other village staff put into this one?
Uh, I would say I put approximately two hours between driving the different truck stops, looking at their signage and looking at, you know, calculating percentages for Thornton's. So not, not too arduous, but.
For a little bit of background, uh, we did have some questions, comments about the signage up at the truck stop. Currently, there's only one sign allowed.
Right.
So we discussed and deliberated and then village staff did a little bit of like work, but were seemed a little bit more. And I don't want to say polite, but for multiple tenants in a building or a business up at the truck stop, you might have a building that would share Road Ranger with Cinco, with Subway. Uh, so the ordinance would be written as opposed to having them constantly come back for variances. Now, per legal entity in that building, they can have a sign plus one. That was a little bit of the backstory that we had gone through. Question, comments?
Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I'm, I do have a question in regards to the outline number one eighth two second sentence. I'm having trouble, trouble understanding it. It says the total allowable sign surface area of any single wall sign on any building shall be computed at three times the lineal footage. Uh, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding what that means.
So this is.
Sign, in other words, if there's, if there's a subway in the truck stop, that one single sign is computed at three times the lineal front footage? I don't get it. Can you explain that?
May I bear with me for just a moment, uh, I'm going to officially declare the public hearing closed. As you've provided the background, there's no number for comment here.
I, I know you're, as we were still in the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. It's closed. Now we're on item D and we can answer Mr. Rosetti's question.
So, uh, that same provision, I believe almost to the exact word, is how the, um, sign area for a single sign was calculated beforehand. So the total amount of signage, no matter how many signs you have, can be up to 10% of the total building face. But any single sign can have surface area equal to three times the lineal front footage. So the larger, you know, the, the longer the face that you have, the larger a single sign can be, or sorry, coming street front exposure. Yeah, correct. And then there's also some maximums listed there, so up to 150 square feet, you know, and then as the building gets further back from the road, the sign can be larger.
Is that linear versus square, so if my building is 60 feet long, I can have a 60 square foot sign? Is that the difference?
Cause you could have a, uh, otherwise you'd have 100, 180 square foot.
Okay, but square feet, that's, cause he's saying, well.
Yeah, I mean, my building is my sign. I do understand that, um, it says the total allowable, total allowable sign surface area, which would apply square feet, but it's not perfectly clear. But I just copied and pasted that right from how it's already listed. Uh, so if you'd like to change the language a little bit on that to make it clearer, that's fine, we can make that happen.
Well, big, 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 uh, before I entertain a, uh, a change to language, I, I really want to understand the, the spirit in which it was written. What, what does it, what do we intend to say? Because this is very, to me, it's very vague and ambiguous.
So the idea is that the larger the building, the larger a single sign is allowed to be. And the number that you do that calculation with is you take the lineal footage of the front face, multiply it by three, and that is the square footage that's allowed for a single sign.
Okay, so if I have 150 square foot building, three times that would be 450. You mean to tell me I could have a 450 square foot sign?
Sure. That's how, that's how it's currently written, I didn't, I didn't make that, just to be clear, that's just how it's currently written.
Now, also what I, what I have a question about is it says the allowable si- a sign surface of any single wall sign. Once again, if there is a subway in the, in the, in the truck stop, does that truck, does that subway have the right to have a 450 square foot sign?
It would.
Large to me.
It would, but it, you know, for example, in the case of Road Ranger, I think they had four, four signs on their front face. So, you know, one of those signs could have been as large as it could possibly be, but then that would limit how large the other signs were allowed to be, because you can only take up 10% of the building face. That's why both of those points are there, to deal with the total, total signage on the face as well as the size of any single sign. Um, by all means.
What I'm understanding, what would make more sense would be to change the verbiage, the total allowable sign surface area of all so- wall signs. Can be three times.
So that.
Am I, am I correct in saying that?
Above it. And the bullet point above it, it's the total area of all wall signs shall be 10%, no more than 10%. So once you decide how large all of, you know, or how, sorry, once you decide the total square footage you want to allow on any building face, that's great, the question is, you know, if that, if that, if that 10% is 500 square feet, do you want there to be a 500 square foot sign? And so the second bullet point speaks to limiting an individual signs allowed size. So for example, Road Ranger would not have been able to have four 300 square foot signs, because that would take up more than 10% of the space. But maybe they can have one 300 square foot sign, the rest of them could have been smaller or just not exist. That's how it's written. It, it doesn't have to stay that way, I just took that how, how it's already written in the code, but if it seems confusing, we can change it.
I, I, I guess what's confusing to me is, uh, the, the term any single wall sign. And I'm, and I'm thinking a single sign would be Subway, uh, uh, I can't think of Subway, Starbucks, or whatever, you know, like many different, there might be four different businesses there. And I'm thinking a single sign would be a sign for that one individual business.
That's correct.
So what I think, what I think we want to say is that the total allowable sign surface area of all wall signs will be computed at three times the lineal front footage. Do you agree with that?
If you're asking me, I believe what you're, the, what you just said is covered in the bullet point directly above it, which limits it to 10%.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I hear, uh, what Commissioner Rosetti is saying, I also understand what you're saying, Mr. Ray. At the end of the day, no matter what the linear feet times three equates to, to equal a square footage, the total signage on that specific building cannot be more than 10%. And if, for instance, if, if, if this is a Road Ranger, because we're only making this text amendment to, uh, to that area of town, if the Road Ranger has four tenants and the Road Ranger chooses to, to put the maximum allowable sign size, which equates to 10% of their frontage, then they're not allowed any additional signs, right? So the, so the owner of the property would have to make those decisions to ensure that the total signage don't, doesn't take up more than 10% of the space. So I think, I understand what Commissioner Rosetti's saying, and, and I don't think he's, he's wrong, we could make the change, uh, the text amendment or, or the alteration to the text amendment, but I think we're saying the same thing, because the, the top bullet says, no matter what, it can't be more than 10%.
I believe that's all correct. The first bullet point says all signs added together on a building frontage cannot be more than 10% of this, of that face. The second bullet point speaks to, you know, a single sign, meaning that, uh, if a business wants to put one sign on the building face, they are limited to those square footages as well as the 10% rule. So for example, 150 square foot maximum where the building is set back less than 200 feet. So if the building is within 200 feet of the road, any single sign is only allowed to be 150 square feet. Even if that's the only sign on the building face, and even if that's only 3% of the building face, a single sign cannot be larger than 150 square feet. So I really think you need both bullet points in some fashion, because you need to address any single sign, how large do you want them to be able to make it? And then you also need to address the total amount of signage you want on that wall. I, I would suggest anyway, I don't have to, of course.
Previously, we only allowed one sign per wall.
Correct, yeah, that's, basically all that's being added is, is the first bullet point, because the second bullet point is how the sign size was regulated when only one sign was allowed.
And now we're looking to add the option for them to choose one sign per tenant, or if they so opt, well, instead of having one sign per tenant, we just want to have one giant enormous sign, but it still has to be limited per item number two.
Right, if you had a.
And item number two was the preceding, that's the rules as they've been.
If you get two, I can find. There's a safe harbor there. If you had a 5,000 square foot building face, the 10% by itself would allow you to have a single sign that's 500 square feet, no matter how close it is to the road, that's a big sign. So the second bullet point, you know, with doing that calculation is what limits a single sign's size. You're allowed to have multiple signs on building, but, you know, a single sign has to be within those parameters.
The thing that kind of catches me, much to Mr. Rosetti's point, vague and ambiguous, is the mathematics of converting from square footage, two dimensional, to that lineal front footage, which is, I don't, only that's.
I, I don't disagree, and that's why when I created the first bullet point, I used 10%. Um, but I just copied and pasted from what is existing in the code for the second bullet point. So if, if you think that's odd or awkward, by all means, we can change it. You know, a single sign could be maximum 3% of the building face, or if you'd like, you can go back and figure out what would be appropriate.
Oh, like, ask him, maybe ask Schuster, like, what is the legal definition or what is the legal translation of that particular sentence? Three times, you mean, the front footage, is it like, just length of the front wall? Ground level, or?
Yeah.
To me, converting from two dimensional to just one dimensional length.
I don't.
Didn't village board actually have a similar issue with, uh, recent construction? One of our ordinances had something specified in cubic feet, which is volume. And square footage, or vice versa?
I don't think so, I mean, some, sometimes people ask about our, our building permitting fees kind of have to do with that, but.
Yeah, that was, that's actually what it was, Lori actually have more information on that. Cause when you're converting dimensions, basically, that's.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, with, uh, going back and figuring out, you know, a way to change that so that we're not going from one dimension to two dimension.
Yeah.
If that's what you all prefer.
Everything else, at least to me, makes sense, and I think Mr. Rosetti was a little confused on the lineal front footage as well.
Well, it's, it's a little complex, I mean, when you read the whole thing. And whether anybody's actually gonna follow this, I don't know.
I mean, when somebody gets a sign permit, this is what we follow.
Yeah, I, yeah, we do, but I don't know about the businesses, though, that's.
No, what I mean is, in order to put up a sign, they have to get a permit, and this is how we determine if their sign is in compliance or not. So, certainly they get a permit.
Yeah.
And we've been following item two up till this time, and right then, quite a few requests to add additional signs. So now we're adding an item one.
Yeah.
Per business.
Yeah, by all means, if you'd like to, to table a motion and, I'm trying to think if we can, we have the public hearing already, so I think you can table a motion, it'd be fine. If you'd like me to come back in your next meeting.
Do we want to just have no single sign greater than 5% of the total square footage of the face or of the wall? Do you want to just break down the 10% into the maximum for a single sign? Or is that too clumsy, too simple?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be too restrictive, and, and we may have businesses coming back asking for variances for their subways, right? So I, I wouldn't go as specific as, you know, the main sign could be X amount, followed by, you know, tenant's sign can be 2%, followed by 2%. I, I think these folks would be coming back for variances to say, hey, my subway sign is 3% of the, of the face. And we'd be, we'd be voting on variances to this exact text amendment that we're trying to figure out.
And, and we don't want to cause undue extra additional work for village staff as well, so if we can clarify this or get clarification.
Josh, does anybody, after they issued the permit, does anybody go out to visually?
Sure.
See the inspection today? Okay.
Yeah. But depending on, I mean, if it's assigned, it's got a lot of electrical work, there's usually an electrical inspection to make sure that's all installed correctly, not to catch on fire. Okay.
Okay, with tabling to clarify lineal front footage. Okay, with tabling, to clarify, lineal front footage?
Just, just unclear, do you wanna clarify it, or do you wanna change?
Clarify or change if necessary. If Mr. Schuster says it's legally vague and ambiguous, which I would agree with Mr. Rosetti, mentally, I can't really work out what, three times lineal front.
Fine, I can tell you what we've been doing, is taking the ground level uh, linear, linear dimension, and multiplying by three, and putting square feet next to it. And these three bullet points after the sentence in question don't scratch that itch? Uh, those, basically with those who are put at maximum? And then they allow for larger signs if you're further away from the road?
Right, makes sense, this is written fine.
Yeah. So, so the clarification is on lineal front footage, that's what we're.
Well, I mean, your, your input is, if you're comfortable with that, it's, doesn't make sense to me, so if you're comfortable with possibly just voting on it as it is.
I, I don't have a strong feeling, so I'm just, yeah, just. And I don't see what the, I mean, they're restricted no matter what.
Yeah.
So it's, it'd be hard for any company to come in and try and even play games with this.
So you guys have been taking, like, the measurement at the base of the wall?
Yeah, we looked there, you know, flat of the building, take that multiple, and then it's five by three.
Okay.
Force the shoes, I'd vote on this one right now.
Good. Well, let the.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I make a, could I make a motion to vote on the text amendment as it's written currently?
You sure, man?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to uh, vote on this text amendment regarding the total square footage of signs uh, within our truck stop district, as it is currently written.
Mr. Philmon. Hold on, Mr. Philmon.
Mr. Rebisch?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Rosetti?
Nay.
Oi. That is technically a quorum. It's four i's, one nay, correct?
Motion passed as written.
Well, now you have to take the vote on, you just, you took a vote to vote, so now you take the vote.
Okay.
That's, that's the, he just, he just forced you to vote on it as, as written, instead of talking about tabling it, or talking about changing it, or anything. So now you have to take a vote on it as written. We did, we did say things to the government all the time, it was great.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to vote on the, actually vote on the uh, proposal, the amendment as written.
I'll second it.
Second.
All right, Mr. Rebisch?
Aye.
I'm a Neil. Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, can we just vote on this already?
Myself, aye.
If uh, if Mr. Ray can.
Sure. So, in parliamentary procedure, when there's a lot of discussion happening about a topic, and, and somebody in the discussion believes that it's not making any further progress, they can make a motion to vote on the topic, and everybody has to decide, okay, yes, we're gonna vote on it, or no, we're gonna discuss it some more. So Mr. Neal just forced a vote on this item, ever, you know, that, that motion passed. So now, there's no more discussion on it, now you have to vote. And it either passes or it fails, and if it fails, then you move on to the next uh, next order of business. So he just effectively ended the discussion, and now you have to actually vote on the recommendation as presented.
Yeah, so Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Interesting. Case not what he said, and it makes sense that we gotta do the extra stuff.
No public comments this evening?
No, sir.
Uh, I myself have no announcements, I believe we are looking for a possible meeting September twelve, twelve?
That is correct, uh, so the, just a quick update, the Business Development Commission did meet, and Chairman Barack was present to discuss the downtown overhanging signs that were brought up at a prior meeting. Uh, some, some communities allow them, some don't, and we currently have two of them that are technically not allowed. So the idea is, if we want to make them, you know, take them down and keep it in the code, that you're not allowed to have those projecting signs, or in some way allow them, and, you know, make sure they can't be flashing neon signs, or whatever the case may be. So the Business Development Commission had some input, and, you know, feel free to jump in, Mr. Barack, obviously, but uh, basically, they talked about not wanting it to be internally illuminated, so no, you know, neon signs, things like that. Uh, having the sign only include business name, logo, hours of operation, maybe.
Yes.
You know, so it didn't, it didn't just say whatever, you know? And then also having it be a, a permanent text, not changeable text. Um, that was kind of the big things I remember them discussing. Um, there will also be, you know, things like uh, it has to be at least eight foot tall, or something of that nature, so that people.
No more than a certain distance from the wall.
Right. Uh, securely fastened, of course. Um, so I'll basically just be bringing you an, another text amendment at your next meeting to consider. And then uh, in addition to that, we did receive a application for variance for the garage. Their application is not totally complete, I imagine it will be in time to do the public notices this week. Uh, so that tentatively may also be on your agenda.
Is the, the signage problems at Fire Hazard, or because of the trucks, or?
No, there, there actually really was no issues that I'm aware of, it was just, I didn't really feel it completely under the purview of our commission to say, yes, you can do it, or no, you can't. I wanted to get the input from the beautification committee of the EDC as to whether or not business development thought it might be a good idea to develop business, or visibility of those businesses.
And the other idea is that it will be restricted to just basically the, the downtown area, I haven't quite figured out how to do that yet, but um, so that, you know, it's, it's not gonna happen at the truck stops, it's not gonna happen on Route seventy-two, or anything.
Was Kelly talking about that?
No.
Okay.
But uh, yeah, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, okay.
Just a little bit of collaboration with some of our fellow committees out there, commissions. I didn't really feel it was our place to say globally, yes or no. I wanted to get their input and perspective on it, from a business development perspective, and beautification as well.
Okay.
I don't see that we'd vote on whether or not we're authorizing him to pass longer recommendations. I probably neglected that.
Yeah, I noticed it too.
It's my mistake.
So if you would, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Request a motion to authorize the chair to report the results of this commission's business tonight. I, I did check the state statute, by the way, and, and the chair does not have the authority to do that, the commission does. So the commission does have to give you the authority each time.
Educational evening, gentlemen.
Yes.
I will now entertain a motion to, for this board commission, to authorize the planning zoning commissioner to present findings of this evening's meeting to the village board of Hampshire.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
That's nice.
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Hey, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-nine PM, please motion.
Second.
Mr. Rebisch?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.